You sit in church.
Lucky dog.
Supervisor Bach is attending remotely from one eighteen Dolphin Drive in Stewart, Florida. So if anyone's going to join him, that's where Jim will be.
Hello.
Oh, Jim.
Can I?
Yep, you can hear you great.
That was one eighteen Bills Drive was the address.
Oh, don't start with the bills stuff. I'm still crying about that.
So the first item on the work session is the zoning board of appeals request to amend the town code. Chapter one sixteen dash ninety two. This is a request that petitioners obtain a building permit within one year of the date of a hearing. I don't know. Liz Cassidy, would you like to elaborate on that a little bit?
So there have been some instances where longstanding variance approvals, like ten years plus have come back. And development hadn't started until now, and it causes some difficulty. So the zoning board had requested the town attorney to look into the possibility of sunsetting their approvals. And so that's what this code change request is for. There is an opportunity for if they have the permit, you know, they can extend the permit until they finish construction. If it doesn't, if construction doesn't get completed, then they have to go back to the zoning board to reaffirm that variance. If they don't begin construction within that timeframe, then the variance is null and void.
Got it. That makes a lot of sense. Paul, do you have anything to add to that? Anything from the board? Any comments?
Just a question as it's code, is it, we're talking local law, public hearing, the whole.
That'll be the next step.
Okay.
Right, Bridget?
Yes.
Take care of that for us?
Yes.
Are we, are we going to discuss this as the code committee or no? Was that, what was the plan?
As the code change?
No, as the code committee.
We could, if you'd like to.
I think so. I mean, just a couple of questions, I think with the language. We may want to take a look. Is a court decision, are we sure we want to put that in or not? Even if it's, it's possible, I don't know, do the court decisions, Bridget usually say some, I mean, if there's someone receives a court ruling in their favor, we're saying they have to apply for a billing permit within a year. But really, what is, what do we have to say about the court ruling is there? So I don't think we can ever put a time limit on that, correct?
I'm going to defer to Rod over here in the audience, if that's okay.
So I mean, we don't have to discuss that today, but that's one issue. And then when we put, you know, there's no recourse to submit a new application to the ZBA or apply to a court if we're using both standards. So I think with the language would be good to either we can get together, get the code committee, just to discuss a couple of issues.
I do think the town under municipal home rule law does have the authority to put a year in here, and I don't think a court could usurp that. But I haven't looked at that specific issue.
Yeah.
And I thought was just mentioned that, that if, if they went past that year, that they could go in front of the ZBA again after that, after that. To apply again.
ZBA, sure, but we have court decision in there as well. So in that situation, someone goes, gets a court ruling in their favor. We're also saying that they have a year to, to apply for the building permit in the first one and then covered in the second one as well, so.
Well, Luke, I mean, there's a certain time period you have to actually file an appeal on that. So I mean, we could even talk about her in the committee, talk about a stay during that time period that they're, that is going up to a court, staying the one year so that there's still a time limit and the courts can do what they need to do.
Right.
Rod Simeon by Barry Cordy, Sarah.
Is that in the village or the town?
That interest, okay. For now.
Never gives up.
The, the reason, the reason Luke that that's in there is that there are two major issues for zoning area in variance and it's, and there's some special like number of dogs, et cetera. But it's probably ninety nine percent area. So what we had to cover is that if someone challenges our decision and they go to court, whenever the court decision comes down, if it's against us, they have a year then to apply for building permit. That's why that, that provision is in there.
Yeah, I understand. The question is, will that hold force, right? You've gone through the court procedure proceeding. Let's say the Supreme Court of Erie County then makes a decision that says that your decision was incorrect.
Correct.
Right? Why is it that we are able to say, well, that court decision is only, it may be the case, but a court has already come with that decision that would be final over the ZBA. And then we issue a permit saying, you know, we don't actually consider that court ruling valid anymore because a year has passed.
No, what will happen is again, we've had one case in like, two cases in ten years that went to court. So we, we issue a, a verdict on approving or disapproving of variance. What this thing says is you have to apply for a building permit within one year. If we deny it and they challenge us in court, the one year starts when the court determines that we were, we were wrong.
Right. I, I understand that that's what we want to do. And that, that's good. My, my question is whether that's possible. Because really what we're doing is there's a court ruling in favor of the applicant. And we're saying, we are saying as a town of Aurora, that that court ruling only has, is, is only applicable for one year. And then the court ruling is no longer applicable, right?
And it's for anybody.
Yes. Yes, in essence, you're correct.
And we are able to do that.
Yes.
It is not saying that the court ruling is no longer applicable and saying that everybody, regardless of your status at that time, you have one year to complete it. And if you're approved, great. If you're not, if you're not approved and you win, you still have that year. And then you just have to start the process again, and you may win again, you know, knowing that you have a court decision to back you up, but.
And in, in practice, how does it work? Do we then issue the, a court says you, you are required to issue a use variance or an area variance? And then we issue one or?
No, what, 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 what they would have to do in, in an area variance, they would then have to apply for the building permit for the application that they applied for. They would have one year to do that. Further is in consultation with Liz, once the building permit is issued, they have one year to essentially complete it and Liz can extend that up to another year. So we're trying to be fair to the residents who apply for use variance, they could have really up to about three years to get their project done. Then if they don't, it's, it's, it's done forever. And this won't be on the books for ten years and all the horror stories that, that came up.
No, I, we agree in principle. We discussed this within the code committee as well. Agree in principle, but I would, if, if we can get the gang back together. You know, we should talk about the language. Another thing is, you know, you have no recourse, your recourse is then to submit a new application to the ZBA. But what happens if there's a court that has determined it, that the ZBA decision was then overruled?
Then they would have one year to apply for the building permit.
Right, but the year passes, then who do they apply?
That's what I'm saying. The, the clock is in limbo, if you will, on a challenge until the court decision comes in.
Yep. So I mean, I, I get that. I think we have to look at that issue if, unless you're a hundred percent clear, then I'm fine. And then take a look at that language, because what happens if there's an appeal or whatever may, may come of it, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to look into it. That's, that's my gut and that's what I think. It, because you, because a year has, has nothing, literally nothing to do with the, the court ruling in favor or against. It's just, it's a timeline that applies to everybody. It's just going to start a little, little bit later if there's an appeal. So, but yeah, I think it's a good idea to look into it just to make sure is that the, the one year doesn't doesn't comment on the validity of the court decision.
You're correct. Just let me add one other thing. When we got into this, we asked Liz for some examples of other metro, metropolitan areas who did this, and this is kind of from Amityville, New York, was the basis that we used it. And I talked to those people. And their attorney obviously approved it and there have been no challenges there. So you know, it's, it's on good foundation that, that this language is proposed to you.
I've heard some horror stories from Amityville.
Yes. Thank you, Rod. Jim, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, I'm, I'm always one for looking into and getting more information on anything. And especially deferring to, to the person that we, we hire for our town attorney to look into it. So, yes, I think take some time. There's no hurry on this, these things. Let's get it right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Jim. I, I'm not sure the best move forward is to get the code committee together because you know, it sounds like it's just a whisker above us. It's more legal minds need to, need to get this wording right. But we can meet as a committee and then, and then send what we find to Bridget or do we just start out with, with what?
I would say.
Puts to us and go from there. Yeah, that sounds best. You agree, Bridget, or what?
Yeah, I want to sit down with Luke because I, I need to better understand what he's, what, what he's looking for here.
Okay, all right, then we'll, we'll await you to send us your wording and we'll go from there. Okay?
All right.
Next on the agenda is a request to hire Richard Miga. Richard is a non-resident. He actually lives in Colden. And he is asking in a conversation with myself and Kathleen, he's asking if we could do a little bit better than what we had put in the paper. And we have tentatively agreed on an hourly rate of twenty eight dollars and thirty six cents. Vacation as always is a big thing with people. He has asked if we would give him two weeks vacation. He said at least one prefers two. But I'll tell you, in, in when Jim and Kathleen and I interviewed him, he has a ton of experience. He has CAD experience, reading blueprints. And we'll get Liz's taken on this for a second. But I, I really think he would be an asset to the town. But what are your thoughts, Liz?
Um, when we first put out the ad, there were three, three responses in. None of them were residents. They all had varying degrees of experience or no experience. Rich brings to the table twenty years of commercial plan review. And he has been involved in project management. He has attended meetings such as these planning boards, that sort of thing, zoning boards. So he does have that experience, which would be a great benefit. He is primarily a commercial side of things, which we don't have a lot of. But that's definitely something that when we do have, it's usually not a small project. So residential, the residential side of things, which is the vast majority of the work that we do here in town, will be something for him to learn. But his skills are extremely transferable. His certifications do assist in in the state cert, recertification and continuing education going forward. As far as his salary request and the two weeks paid vacation, I have no objections to those. And I think he would be an asset to the department.
It was, this is a full-time position?
This would be full-time, yes.
Okay.
desperately needed.
Okay. And is that the, would he, he'd be a person that writes citations that maybe are returnable in court and things like that as well?
Exactly. I mean, he would do the full gamut of the job from, you know, the day-to-day reviewing and issuing permits, construction inspections, violations, inspections, and then all the way up to, you know, preparing the justice court paperwork. He would also be in attendance of meetings. So that, that workload would definitely become more balanced. And yeah, and that's the full, the full duties of the code enforcement.
Does he have experience as far as that, writing citations or is that an in-house training that?
That's an in-house training. It actually runs all through our, our software package. So as long as the codes are, the codes that are in violation are in there, which we pretty much input them all. You know, he'll be able to process.
And if I could just add to that, Liz, he's, he's spent time on the other side of the fence with, with violations that, that he's worked with the contractor or the developer or whatever. So I mean, he's familiar with the process, that's for sure.
Correct.
Just that he'll be on this side of the fence.
And do, if you know, or Chuck, if you know, what was budgeted for that position?
In the twenty-three budget, it's fifty-five. We had proposed fifty-eight. And he had requested a little bit more, less vacation. So we landed at fifty-nine.
I have no problem with a vacation. It doesn't even seem to make sense. You work a full year.
Well, you know, we just changed our vacation policy not that long ago and, and it went from how it was, you went a year from the following January when you were hired, so it was hired. So in this case, with Rich, he would get one year from twenty-four, so he wouldn't get any vacation time until twenty-five. We changed that to at least you got a year. You know, the following January, it's twenty-four, he would get a week vacation and you know, when you get into the higher level, more skilled people, that, that's tough and and even young people, maybe that's something we should revisit again.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Chuck, if I might be able to add something. So I was in on interview, most impressive interview. And Liz can tell you, Liz is stressed. I mean, she is doing the work of how many people is up. And this, to have someone come in that's semi-trained, more than semi-trained and and have the ability to do the things that we need to, to do to move forward, I think it's very important that we look at when we're hiring professionals, assessors or the code enforcement. It's a little bit different than hiring, and I don't want to take away from other, other people, but these are, these are professional people that, that it's hard to find. It's really hard to find in our own community, let alone outside the community. So we need to make the arrangements to, to take care of them if we, if we're going to want to hire them. Otherwise, we're going to be in the situation that we are now with, with Liz working with, and, and this is no, nothing against Paul. He's, he's great. He's a part-time code enforcement officer, but she needs more. And there's a lot, there's a lot going on and it gets, and it gets more and more and more complicated as years go on. So I'm all for, I'm all for hiring this gentleman. I thought he was very impressive. I think that would relieve Liz from a lot of stress that she is under right now, so.
Couldn't agree more, Jim. Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good that we have the residency requirement for, for, for this. And of course, we, as we spoke about, I think even previously, if we are not able to find a candidate, then we go with our best candidate, the best interest of the town. This was advertised, so okay with that. The vacation policy, yes, we discussed it previously. We need to return to it, but even in here as well, we're not like, this is a request that's out in left field. Two weeks is quite reasonable for someone of his position and experience.
And just, and just to add, I think sometimes everyone gets in the habit of looking at employees as sort of a liability, but really people we hire are an asset. And you gotta, you gotta, you get, get, when you have the chance, you get the best asset you can. And it sounds like this guy fits that bill. So I'm all for spending a little bit more money to get somebody we can sort of plug and play into the position and get the job done.
Very well put.
Anything else, Jim?
No, no, I'm good.
And the next item on the agenda is the Association of Towns voting designation. This is to designate Dave Gunner as a, as an, as an approved voting delegate for the Association of Towns at their business meeting. Dave, do you have anything you want to say?
Chuck, I've, I've done it before two times already. I was able to go, nobody else was, so it'd be a pleasure to put in our vote for whatever bills they have.
Okay. Any comments?
Just that we, we as, as Association of Towns, we usually come up with the agenda that we would like to vote on. So by the time Dave goes to that, we'll have items that we would like to vote on. He's been there before. He knows, he knows, right, Dave?
Right, Jim. Yeah, you're right. The actual votes haven't come out yet, right, Martha? I haven't seen what they're, I think that does happen before you go, so.
All right. Next is the East Fillmore Bridge waterline replacement. And in front of us, we have a proposal from the, from the village. But I, I would just like to mention before we get too deep into this, that actually like about eleven o'clock this morning, you know, part of this culvert replacement is still developing. And you know, the waterline portion of the project that was intended to be the village responsibility is not, and we're trying to work those details out. So I would ask if we save this discussion until we have the right way that we want to move forward with this, because we're, we're just speculating at this point. We have some ideas. We don't know how many of them work. So if we could just essentially table that.
Sounds like an excellent tactic. I agree.
I agree, Chuck, too. There's no question. Although there's no question that the bridge looks like it's in this repair. And that the, the fact that the town now is legally charged with the bridge replacements and the bridge security that this is not a secure bridge and it needs to be, it needs to be taken care of.
Hey, thank you, Jim. Next on the agenda is the East Fillmore Culvert slash Bridge closure. And I'll let Dave give us the latest and greatest on, on this.
Yeah, Chuck, is the board knows because I notified them on Wednesday immediately. On Tuesday, our project engineer went to the site for just regular pictures for the coming brochure for the public meeting. And added, he noticed serious deterioration of the southeast corner of the East Fillmore Bridge structure roadway. As you can see, as you can see, an underdrain pipe was placed over there on the left there. All that dirt is coming down and roding away. Above that, you can't see above that pipe. The black top has started to unravel. And where the road, pipe crossed the road. The southeast wing wall in the picture, which you can kind of see is right between the pipes and the support structure is totally falling apart to a total deterioration. And the most worrisome part is the support structure, the, the front third of that is now come, come apart. You can see that right to the right of the pitcher, there's a big rock that's come out of there and that whole chunk of wall is now separating and coming out. He immediately notified our bridge engineer, Jerry Sense, who let me know that night, which would have been Tuesday night about ten PM. When I saw it the next morning, I notified all five board members that I felt that the road needed to be closed. At that time Supervisor Bach asked for good reason. You don't want to close a bridge without making sure that we would get a, the engineer to actually look at it and determine that it was unsafe. We just got that report today. Jerry was out there Friday and it is his recommendation to close. In the meantime, I hate to say, I kind of knew we were headed this way and as the board knew, we already started mobilizing. We have had the barricades brought in on Thursday last week. We've picked up the message board from the county. We have everything ready to go. It just, tonight, we need to make a decision. I've notified East Door Police, I've notified the fire company, I've notified the garbage company, the school buses, that we have the potential as of tomorrow to close bridge. Here we are. It, why we didn't close it immediately, there is still some strength to that structure, but as you could see, about a third of it is gone. So me and the engineer felt that it was okay to wait till this meeting to discuss with the board to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
I think it's important to that, if we, if we make that determination tonight, that immediately the village should be notified along with any residents that are in that area.
Yeah, Jim, I, I did, Matt Hay does know. I told him I believed. We will tomorrow morning, as soon as this declaration goes out. It's a document they'll get mailed to every end of the year, emailed or faxed. We will have our team in the morning, go door to door and tape it on the door, notices to the roads. I just didn't want to do nothing until we knew for sure that we're all on the same page as where we should head. But I think it doesn't really take an engineer really to figure out that that bridge is not going to last much longer. Especially with the winter floods or the ice jams that could be coming. It's holding, but I think it's obvious it's something, we need to close the road. We can't wait till April.
I think it's important to realize that the town is liable, you know, that since the court has made us responsible for the bridge, we're, we're liable for, for anything that happens. And if there's any kind of, isn't that we should close it then? And the engineers say that we should close it. I think we, we, we have a responsibility to do so.
Okay, just so the board knows, this isn't something that requires board action, but I definitely would like to hear from all five board members to make sure they understand what we're doing.
I, I am one hundred percent behind an engineer's report that says a bridge isn't safe.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much more is to add. If an engineer informs us that bridges isn't safe, how could we possibly not close a bridge, so?
Yeah, I appreciate you, Dave, going out there, taking a look and, you know, having your opinion backed up is, is helpful, but not necessary sometimes.
Yeah, certainly. We have an unsafe bridge. It needs to be closed.
Yeah, I think just obviously the good news is we were prepared. We already have the grant, so I guess hats off to us that we were ready, you know, for this to happen.
Now, a lot of what's under there is, I mean, that's, you, you had told me the history of the bridge. A farmer who owned the entire land built a little, a lot of those stones we're looking at there were originally placed when, like?
You'd have to ask Rob Goller to confirm it. I, I would guess around nineteen hundred.
Who knows to the farmer who built it, because?
It lasted over a hundred years. The top portion was built in nineteen forty-one. We do have a drawing for that, that the village put that on there. But yeah, no, it's incredible. It's lasted this long. You know, who knows if over the years, maybe it was kind of taken care of a little bit better, you know, like some could be, you know, re-pointed over the years, but this one's been let go so far that there's nothing you can do to save that.
We need to get ahold of that farmer to help us with the new. Lasted a hundred years.
Yeah, we should. Yeah, okay.
All right. So we're all in agreement? And I would just like to add that that engineer's report will be on the website as soon as possible tomorrow.
Yeah, what I'll do is you Yeah, what I'll do is you saw the emergency closure form that Martha had made up, we'll staple that to the notice that'll go on everybody's doors and in the mailer too, just so that there's no question where we're at, okay, and you know, we have a plan, you know, it's going to be marked well. There's really much more we can do about it, just have to go.
Okay, thank you, Dave. And anything, anyone else would like to add to the work session part of the meeting tonight?
Uh, yeah, just to talk quickly about Code Red, so Chuck and I met earlier today. Joe, I know that we've spoken about this as well, so the social media policy and the Code Red policy, if we focus on the Code Red policy with trying to get that short up so we can begin using the program as quickly as possible. So I think if we can commit to a schedule to get everyone's comments and then talk about them amongst ourselves and try to get it ahead so that next meeting we'll be able to present it, to be able to vote on it. Just some background is that there are two different uses that we have split the Code Red into, the first is for emergency uses, and it's a pretty easy trigger. Many people can send it, Chief Krieger can send it without telling anybody it's an emergency situation. The second use that we have are for issues like a road will be closed, or a bridge will be closed. And we'll be able to have, well, we certainly have different rules for that, so we would need some administrators to do this. For example, a bridge closing would be geo-targeted to the people who only signed up for general notifications within that neighborhood. And that, we're not there yet with the language, bridges have been working on it, but we can get there, I think the most important thing is, do we agree with these two separations in principle? If we do, then what are the situations, the best, the more descriptive we can make it, the better? So that we, what situations are we going to be using Code Red for? Because I think that's a, it's a clear situation. Use variances, I think personally, if I get a text message or a call that says they're going to be reviewing a use variance of my neighbor's property, I wouldn't be upset about that, but we need to talk about that each as a board, so I would propose that if we can you can take a look at it, we'll get everybody's comments by the twenty-seventh. Then I can commit to by the, by February first, getting that back to everybody with comments and sort of a new draft that Bridget then can commit to, I don't know, how long would you need, depends, but let's just say a week to February eighth, and then we can review any sort of last issues by the fifteenth, when we would need to get it, oh no, sorry, the thirteenth is our meeting, right? No, sorry, I'm off, I'm off on our months.
Also thirteen, obviously the second Monday.
Yep, no, we have three weeks, that's why, so I'm on the wrong month here, so, so by the twenty-third of January, we get our, everybody's comments.
That's today.
We're already overdue.
Look, I was right, I was right, sorry. Yeah.
So I would only, I would only caution, and not to interrupt you. And thank you guys for your time you're putting into this, the only question that I have looking forward is, is overusing Code Red to the point where it's not accepted and and listened to by the public if we overuse it, so that's only, that might be the only thing that I would be worried about.
I think, I think we all have that concern, we don't want that to happen, clearly, if a, if a road is going to be closed, I don't think any member of the public who receives that is, you know, if it's in that area is going to be upset about that. If you receive time and time again that there, we're going to have more chickens in the village, right, then that would be something that maybe people get upset about, so really, I think it's, it's just working through the details and coming up with a list of what do we want to use this for, changes of the garbage schedule. Right, that would be something that I would put on there, and we can think of as many, many situations that are non-emergency use. The, the, the more we come up with, the better. I mean, unless we only want one or two, I'm just saying, you know.
No, I, I, I agree, I mean, Luke and I had ran a lengthy discussion about this earlier today, and I think, I think I came away with this, we're probably not going to get this nailed down perfect the first time around, it's, it's going to take a little time to get this the way that everybody wants it and what's worked, what works well with most. So, but.
We looked at other towns that have Code Red and how they've administrated it, how they use it.
Yeah, I think there's, there's one category of towns that have a full-time emergency manager who uses the code, but generally the, the language is very broad and it allows a lot of interpretation, whoever it is that's authorized to send the message, so that's kind of I did not find any policies, we did not receive any from Code Red that would be as specific as what we want as a board to limit to only certain situations.
Yeah, so I, I'm signed up for the city of Buffalo Code Red, because I was working down there. And they have different problems there than we do in East Aurora, but they, I signed up for emergency and they have, like I said, problems unfortunately there. But last year, following the top shooting and then the snow citywide closures of the roads, that was it, those are the only notifications I got. So it was effective for, you know.
So you get, you get emergencies, true emergencies only.
It was true emergency, right?
Yeah, and this, this, when the sign up for our Code Red has an emergency, and then, which is always checked off. And then you can check to sign up for general notifications.
And I live here, obviously, so I think you, you would want to check more, but that was just, you know, only where it works, so.
And that's really the hard part anyway, is the general notifications, everybody wants to be informed, certainly if there's a shooting.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, but.
And the emergency notification, we don't really have any, I mean, you're not going to be able to, you don't want to limit this type of situations. We trust Chief Krieger, the fire chiefs, whoever has access to the system, that if it's an emergency situation, that you know, you need to, you need to get that message out quickly, so it's the general notifications that we really need to hammer down, I think.
And we start with the notifications that the town already provides, right, I mean, if there's a if there's a ZBA, we notify the neighbors, if there's a matter before the planning board, we notify the neighbors. We're going to be putting stickers on, or notices on people's doors for the bridge, right, these are all examples of times we're already notifying neighbors, we're just going to have another tool to do it. And perhaps garbage, which we're not, you know, if the garbage is delayed due to, due to fall weather, it's one day behind, that's something we don't currently notify, so we're going to, we're going to take things we already notify people about, we're a better tool to do it, and we're going to add a little bit more and provide people a little bit more information, but I a hundred percent agree, you overuse it, it loses its effectiveness, so we will strike that balance, and as you said, Chuck, I'm sure we won't get it right the first, first crack out of the box.
Work in progress. That's what makes us great.
Yep.
Anything else, Jim?
Good.
All right, thank you Luke for that, and we'll move into the regular meeting.
Sorry, just to, we never, the dates, so if by the twenty-seventh, we can get the comments?
Yeah.
That would be good, and then we'll, we'll kind of put it together, I'll talk to Bridget. Maybe we can get everything back by the, the third. And then that gives us until the eighth, when, the Wednesday before our next meeting, when Martha's going to put the agenda together, that we can have some sort of version that's a little more progressed than what we have currently.
Perfect. Sure, big thing is getting you the comments by the twenty-seventh, that's where the start of it is. Thanks. Okay. We have no public hearings tonight. So next is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the January ninth, twenty twenty-three work session and, and meeting minutes?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is an opportunity for the audience, excuse me, to address any item on this agenda. If you would like, please come up to the mic, give us your name and address, and, and we will.
My name is Dorota Johnson, I'm at eight nine eight East Fillmore Avenue, I am, um, excuse me, Little Red House after the one-lane bridge on East Fillmore, hey, I've been here before, okay? Um, not disputing anything that I saw this with the bridge cracked, whatever, and you know, I, it's, the closure obviously is going to be hard for us, okay, but it is what it is. Um, the reason why I'm here, um, last week, Thursday, on the twentieth, the town of Aurora decided to deposit two concrete barriers on my front lawn without permission from my husband or myself, okay, went through this already with the signage, I was here regarding that. Okay, I did call Dave and told him I wanted him removed immediately because of how what our yard was. I actually sent pictures to the village, okay, um, Dave contacted his crew, they came down and they moved the concrete barriers across the street. Um, I have already told Dave several times that I don't want anything in our yard. Um, Dave, you know, was good enough to, you know, take care of it like right away, and I mean, he did right away. Um, I did tell, I did politely tell the town team that I came down and that moved the barriers, that we want nothing deposited on our property, no equipment, no pickup trucks, nothing. Okay, because of how what it is. And I, this is through the whole thing with this bridge and the sidewalks and everything else, this has been my, my plea because of how what my yard, my front yard is, okay? My husband and I have worked very hard to keep our lawn, and that's our lawn, okay, it's not like it's not like brush or anything, okay, we've worked very hard to keep up with that, okay? Um, I, I feel that all should be deposited on the west side of the bridge, the village property or on the road, okay, and obviously now the road's going to be shut off. Equipment, whatever, you got a hundred feet in front of my house of asphalt, they can do whatever, okay, but I'm asking so whoever, you know, whoever's going to be in charge of the engineering or whatever, I'm asking that the equipment stay off my front yard. Okay, um, well, I asked one of the town guys why the barriers were coming down, or they came down, because we thought that, you know, the whole thing wasn't going to start until April first, but now tonight, we know better, so I don't want to go any further into that. Um, I did talk to and I can't remember the gentleman's name, he was the third gentleman that was down there when they were moving the barriers, very nice guy. He was, I don't know, he was, uh, surveying like the, the water and pipes and everything else, and I did point out a couple of things on the east side of the bridge, like we, you know about the telephone pole on the west side where the bridge is going to be going over, but there is a small um, telephone pole on the east side that actually connects our telephone service to our house. Okay, and nobody, so I pointed it out, I pointed out a few other things to him, like the manhole across the street on the, and so forth. Okay, and it, and he reassured me about a few things as far as, you know, when they start doing, or when the bridge, the new bridge gets put in, okay? I do have, I have concerns, okay, um, um, well, the first concern is I don't want anything on our yard, but when the bridge gets demoed, I have a concern that I'm hoping because of, because, because of right now of all the unpredictable rain and the snow mountain, everything that's happening. The way our property, our property is kind of low to the, to, to Tannery Brook. Okay, when they do the demo, I'm hoping at first, until whenever, like right before they do the construction, that they're kind of mindful of maybe keeping those sides of the, you know, of the, the bridge or like the bottom part so that Tannery Brook does not get redirected, redirected onto my property, and what happens when it does go over, and it did go over last week a little bit, it goes, if when it majorly goes over, it goes over across the side of my yard and it goes down towards Martin, that goes right down the street. Okay, so I'm just been there for a long time and just observing, okay, um, also I have two more things.
Thank, just one question, so when it, when it does flood like that, are you, you are north, upstream or downstream from the bridge? Downstream from the bridge? Upstream?
So I don't.
Relative to the bridge, yeah.
With the creek.
So, yeah, the creek, the creek goes by your property before goes by the bridge.
This is the best way for me to explain, not really um, I'm a little nervous right now too, all right, Tannery Brook's flowing this way. My house is here. Here's the bridge, my house, my property actually is not, um, our property is right next to the bridge. Okay, so what, we're like really low. Okay, so when we get a lot of rain, and I actually have pictures, I actually took photos of the big ice jam that broke apart on that bridge, and that's probably what did some of that damage to that bridge last year. I don't know if there was ice jams out to the village, but we that ice hit that bridge, it almost hit our house, I mean, I had, I had big chunks of ice.
Yeah, it, it just, is it, is it backing, is it because it's backing up at the bridge, up, and that, that's causing the water to flow well?
With the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll, it, it just, and sometimes if there's so much rain, it'll come down the hills, and, and that bridge, that, that, well, it's a broke. It's sometimes it broke, it is like, I mean, this is scary, okay? I mean, it's, it really gets going, that water, you see how high that bridge? I have seen that water right up to that bridge. Okay, and when it, when it gets like that, that's when it goes right down, it starts on the corner of our house and it goes right down the street.
So it builds up behind the bridge, is what?
Yeah, by the bridge, yeah, and that's why I'm like, you know, I, I just because we've been, even my husband, he said, point that out to them, point that out, my husband is well enough to be here, okay, uh, but just, um, that, that when you, when they do the demo, you know, especially right now, I would not you know, I would not tear apart those bottoms, just to make sure that the creeks or the brook still goes the right way. Okay, and that, that's the other concern that if any equipment, heavy equipment comes down like, like on the side of our, like in the corner of our lot, and actually it even was down a couple of feet, that's going to redirect uh, the brook, okay, when we have a heavy rain, yeah, I have allergies, I'm not sick, right? I see, I see him with the tissues or whatever, um. So that, that's, that's a concern to me, you know, with, with the demo, okay? And, and I don't feel my property is not part of the construction, so I don't feel that that there should be, like, I don't feel that there should be any equipment on my property. Uh, regarding, there's plenty of room on the other side of village property, okay, and there'll be plenty of room on the road when they do do, you know, the construction.
If I could just mention, and then I want Dave to, to speak too, but there will be a public meeting when that, when we go through just exactly all the, all the phases and demolition and construction and where that, but also I'm just going to mention to Dave to possibly put up a construction fence without, and I'm saying this without seeing the plan, so but if we could put up a, a construction fence
Okay.
to keep equipment and trucks and so on, off of your property.
Chuck, we have it loaded on the truck already for tomorrow morning.
And that's the thing, I don't want him to think that I'm like.
No, we're not.
No.
Okay. Dorota, you got to admit, I apologized up and down.
I know.
Okay. All right, so what happened is, is with Ms. Johnson's property, because of the property line issue, the highway guys aren't used to that, they're used to the center line of the road being where the property line is, and when I sent the bearers over, it was actually Erie County Highway did it for us with our men, they naturally assume the shoulder of the road is the town property, I, it was my fault, I didn't explain to them, we literally have a hundred foot to the west, but her property is, it's, you're right. So we will make sure again, and I know I immediately got it moved, it doesn't excuse, it shouldn't have happened, and.
They, the guys were.
Yeah.
They apologized, okay, and, and I got.
Right, so.
Happy that they came and got it right away, because if they wouldn't have, that would have been.
Yeah, so this, this plan that we have, like Chuck said, right now, the public meeting hasn't been mailed out, but it's, and it'll be scheduled for the fourteenth of February. Every resident will know and they'll be able to come, and it's an informational session. Uh, so first off, this job is a hundred percent going to be done within the right away, we're not planning on working on anybody's property, okay?
I was hoping that, because you have space.
Yes, you're correct. Well, it's still going to be tight, I mean, but you know, as far as like utilities, like you're talking with phone lines and things, those are issues that sometimes when cranes are in there temporarily, they get moved just because of that, I'm not going to promise that there couldn't be a delay for that reason, it's obvious. Now, the only issue though, and I want to make sure it's clear to the board is Ms. Johnson mentioned how, you know, you want to keep upstream. We are not working upstream, that's off the property line, so what you're asking, we don't have intention on anything there, now when we remove the bridge, absolutely, anything that we don't need to. we don't have intention on anything there. Now, when we remove the bridge, absolutely, anything that we don't need to touch, we're gonna leave there. But I just wanna make sure you understand that, that
Right, no.
There's no retaining wall, we're not building. Yeah, so that's really what your problem is, more than the bridge, is your property's low there, that, I just make sure you know that, that that's.
But that's my point of why we don't want anybody digging there.
Sure, no, no, we, again, we're, we're to stay in our property lines, but I just wanna make it clear, if you were under the impression we were going upstream to.
I have just.
Okay.
And right now, and, and just to keep peace with best way for me to say it, peace with the family. Um, I have, we have the property marker, in fact, right before the bridge, it, I don't know, if you were down there, you saw the piece of wood and actually that's our, that is our property line between our property and the Collins. I would like to keep, there's a marker, that's actually, there's a piece of wood, but there's actually a marker in, in the ground that is our property. Is anyway, is it all right if, like, I have my husband or somebody just put a great big pole there where it doesn't get.
Did, did we put it there?
You would.
You know, did, did our surveyor put it there?
No, my surveyor.
Okay.
And, and your.
Again, it's your private property, you do whatever you want with it.
Verified it, he, when they were doing it, in fact, I actually gave them our cert, cause I have a copy of the survey, okay, and I gave it to him and I was, you know.
We would appreciate you marking it well.
Well.
Yeah, it's your private property, you can do it, we, we, we.
Around these like mark, marking.
Okay, it is, it is, it, it's a hard job for the workers to understand that literally the part of the road is off private property, so the more you leave there is just gonna help them understand. If you want, we could even help market better too. We, we wanted.
I think I have something that we can put in, okay, and then I will put like a, like right now, uh, between uh, my other, our other property, we, I have a pole with American, we're just gonna keep it there just for, you know, we just, I've always had it there, now it's decorated because when they were doing uh, surveying, they went around and they decorated, which is fine. It, it just, it doesn't bother me right now, things are under construction. But, um, I will, we'll put something and then we'll mark it with the tape. So this, and I would appreciate, and really appreciate that.
You know, I apologize again.
Okay, alright, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Emma Reynolds, nine hundred East Fillmore. Um, I have two very quick questions. One is, what's the plan to put up uh, road closure signs?
So tomorrow, you see the two barricades were dropped off there, they're gonna be placed immediately, in front of them will be try to remember how we do this, we put a, a standard road close sign in front of that barricade. But in front of that, out at the intersection of Martin and Fillmore will be another one, but it'll have attached to it, this is local uh, whatever, local entrance only, so it won't impact you, um. On the other end, uh, just temporarily, cause we don't own it, um, the county's gonna let me use it at least for a month. Uh, hopefully they forget it's there and it can stay all year. Uh, a blinking message board, so as soon as you turn on pine, you will know immediately twenty-four hours a day blinking out there. It says, we're, bridge closed ahead. So, and then on the other end, identical to the Martin Road End, it would be one right up against the barricade. One about a hundred feet up further, so multiples still hopefully, there, i- if they hit the barricade, it's not moving, it's about four tons.
I think we just wanted to avoid people turning around in private driveway.
I can't prevent that.
Do everything we can to avoid it. That was all I was hoping for. And, and the other thing was, are we able to bring the project forward now, as we're three months earlier?
What, pardon, what did you say?
Can you bring the project forward now? We're closing the bridge three months.
We have no intention of demolishing the bridge till after April first. That hasn't changed the timeline, we're still not done with our design. There's no speeding up the project, it's just for safety reasons, it was closed. Um, we do plan on, um, as soon as the weather breaks, I think you know we have some tree work that has to be done by March thirty-first. Uh, next, maybe this week, um, more net by next week, some test holes are gonna be starting to get dug to find the water line that's there. But no, it's pretty much, nothing really changed, it's just, we had to close it sooner.
But, thank you.
Thank you.
No choice.
Step up.
My name's Carol Howard, I live at eight sixty-two East Fillmore on the west side of the bridge. I'd like to know why they're closing the road tomorrow, when the project doesn't start till April. What happens with the snowplow? We have two more months of winter, and what about the garbage truck?
Well, we're closing the road because the bridge has been deemed unsafe by our, by our, by our engineer.
No, I was not.
Oh.
The wall's coming up out of it.
Oh. Okay.
You see that old part there, there?
Yes.
Yeah, let's pull it away.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on to unfinished business. The first is a payment to Floyd Albert for, for the engineering. Could I have a motion to approve payment number four to Floyd Albert in the amount of thirty thousand forty-six dollars and thirty-one cents for professional services rendered from October twenty-nine to December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for the Church Street Bridge Replacement Project. Funds will be dispersed from H seven five one two zero dot two one zero.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is another request for Floyd Albert. Can I have a motion to approve payment number four to Floyd Albert in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and two dollars and sixty-two cents? For professional services rendered from October twenty-nine to December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for the East Fillmore Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. Funds will be dispersed from H seven five one two zero dot two one zero.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a request from Lippus Mathis. Can I have a motion to approve payment to Lippus Math- Mathias LLP in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents? For professional services rendered from August fifteenth to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, for the Article seventy-eight proceedings the zoning board of appeals. Um, funds will be dispersed from line A one four two zero dot four one six, special counsel.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we'll move on to new business. First on the list, can I have a motion to hire Richard Miga at an hourly rate of twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents uh, with two weeks paid vacation in twenty twenty-three at, and a start date of February thirteenth two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-three, and also noting that he is a non-resident of the Town of Aurora.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is to approve Dave Gunner as a voting delegate. Well, I'll start right out with this. Can I have a motion to approve Dave Gunner as a voting delegate at the Association of Towns uh, Business Meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Jim? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have an agreement of the expenditure of highway monies. Uh, and I'll just read the agreement quickly. This agreement between the town superintendent of the town uh, of Aurora, Erie County, New York, and the underside members of the town board, town board pursuant to provisions of section two eighty-four of the highway law, we agree that money's levied and collected in the town for the repair and improvement of highways and received from the state and for state aid, where the repair and improvement of highways shall be expended as follows. Under general repairs, a sum of three hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars shall be set aside for the expansion, expended for primary work and general repairs upon fifty-nine point three miles of town highways, including sluices, culverts and bridges having a span of less than five feet and boardwalks or the renewals thereof. And permanent improvements, the following sum shall be set aside to be expended for the permanent improvement of, of the town highways on Shopper Road commencing at Boys Road and leading to Grover Road, which is point seven five miles. Um, they, there shall be expended not over the sum of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to approve this agreement as written and as stated?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is also another, um, expenditure of highways money, and I won't read that first part of it anymore, we'll just get right into the nitty gritty of it. So this this agreement is for general repairs in the sum of zero dollars shall be set aside to be expended for primary work and general repairs of town highways including sluices, culverts and bridges having a span of less than five feet in boardwalks or the renewals thereof, and under permanent improvements, the following sum shall be set aside to be expended for the permanent improvement of town highways on the road commencing at East Fillmore Road and leading to Gerard Avenue, a distance of less than a tenth of a mile. There shall not be expended over the sum of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Can I have a motion to approve this agreement as written?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, some discussion on the very top, and I, I'm sorry, I noticed on the last one. Says the agreement is between the town superintendent of the Town Aurora, should be town highway superintendent?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the town board, yes.
Right, so I don't know that it matters, uh, if it does, but.
I, I could.
Just to type.
Mention that typo, is that, it, it, uh, it's supposed to.
Doesn't bother me, I just wanna make sure it's okay.
No, you're absolutely right, Jim.
Chuck, could I add something, um, just so the board knows, uh, we did do these two eighty-four graves for East Fillmore and Church last year. And because church isn't being done this year, it's just a formality, you will, we will have to do another one next year too. This just allows us to expend money on the bridge right now with the engineering things. So I just want you to know that, in case you can remember doing this a few months ago. It's just every year it has to get renewed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I'll read this one right, Jim. Hey, we have one more. This agreement between that town highway superintendent and the Town of Aurora, Erie County, New York, and the underside members of the town board pursuant to provision in section two eighty-four of the highway law, we agree that money's levied and collected in the town for the repair and improvement of highways and received from the state or state aid. Uh, for the repair and improvement of highways shall be expended as follows. Under general repairs, the sum of zero dollars shall be set aside and to be expended for primary work and general repairs of town highways, including sluices, culverts, bridges, and having a span of less than five feet and boardwalks or the renewal thereof. Under permanent improvements, the following sum shall be set aside to be expended for the permanent improvement of town highways on the road commencing at Pine Street and leading to Warren Avenue for a distance of less than a tenth of a mile, that shall be expended not over the sum of eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-one. Can I have a motion to approve the uh, agreement as stated above?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a budget amendment from Kathleen Moffett. Can I have a motion to, to, um, appropriate a line transferring funds to pay for new radios in the park trucks, the amendment is as follows. Add appropriation line A seven one one zero dot four two zero Parks Mobile Radio Service Contract. And reduce appropriation line A seven one one zero dot four two four, maintenance of equipment by nine hundred and eighty dollars with a current balance of three thousand, four hundred dollars. And increase line A seven one one zero dot four two zero by nine hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved.
And I have a second.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a, a, uh, request from Donna Bodecker. Can I have a motion to accept the donation from the Hostess Society at the amount of two hundred dollars? The money will be used to assist in purchasing a new microphone for the new sound system and that the funds be placed in line TA one zero 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 dot nine zero.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have another request from Donna Bodecker. Can I have a motion to accept the donation of one hundred dollars from Donna Border? Donna has made a donation in memory of Connie, M. Nitz, who recently passed away. Connie was a longtime member of our center and would, and would like the money to be placed in line TA one zero 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 dot nine zero.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
A brief comment. Oh, good.
I'm just saying, I would say, I personally knew Connie Kabinist and, uh, and the family and ex, I've seen her every day when I was at Town Hall. At, at Town, at the senior center, and she was really loved and was there every day and, um, I just wanna thank you for the donation.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, I wanna echo that, Jim. Uh, I knew Connie as well. She was one of the finest athletes in the, uh, East Aurora ever had. Uh, she was a multi-sport athlete, she swam. She, I think she passed at ninety-three, but she swam almost every day still. Um, got around as best she could and, uh, was just an amazing asset to our community and it's, I, I'm really sorry to see her pass.
Well, thank you all for saying such nice things about her. She evidently was an absolutely wonderful lady, that's for sure, and we appreciate this. Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is another request from Donna Bodecker. Can I have a motion to accept the donation of one hundred dollars from the Western Zone of the New York State Retired Teachers Association? Um, these funds are to be placed in line TA one zero 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 dot nine zero.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a request from Liz DeViso. This is, uh, evidently the, the chipper wheel broke and, uh, and we have.
It's just parts.
Yeah.
It's not, we didn't pay them to fix it, it, just how much the parts cost.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to approve payment to Boschman Services Incorporated, invoice number one? to approve payment to Boschman Services Incorporated invoice number one four two six three five for three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents uh, for a chipper replacement wheel and a cutter wheel and belt.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? I would just like to note that, that, uh, Dave notes on here that there were no other vendors that, to, um, were available that they could purchase this from.
That's correct. It's a Carlton brand and they're the only dealer in New York State.
Is this what the branch is going to and stuff? Is this that kind of chipper?
Yes. Yes. We don't, yeah. We don't use it a lot anymore, but you do still need a tree grow because we have the grapple now, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a, uh, document from, from Drescher Malecki. Could I have a motion to authorize the supervisor or the deputy supervisor to sign the audit agreement from Drescher Malecki as written?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jim's awful quiet back there.
I, I would just want to say that it's an annual audit that we do, um, um,
Thanks, Chuck.
For the town. So that's what this is all about.
Yep. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, I, I agree with Luke. Don't encourage him, okay?
Under communications, we have the town clerk twenty twenty-two annual report, the senior center twenty twenty-two report, the EAPD November twenty twenty-two, the dog control December twenty twenty-two report, the work requisitions from December twenty twenty-two and the historian's annual report. And Rob, do you have anything that you would like to say to us about, about the annual report from the historian?
Well, it is available online. And if anybody wants to read the past ten years, you may look online as well on the website, but I do want to highlight we, I'm the only staff member of the historian's office. So we get a lot done because of the volunteers that we have. So I just want to thank them again. Um, we would not. I mean, I think I said over four hundred hours of volunteer time was logged last year. So we would not do what we're doing downstairs without their help. So I, that's, that's probably the biggest highlight of of what we do down there is the volunteers that are in there. And again, they're, they're Wednesdays and Thursdays. If you want to come meet them. Um, Lucas and Justin and then Marion, um, Marion's fabulous. Uh, I won't tell you her age, but she did graduate in nineteen forty-two from East Row High School. So she's like a living historian. So, um, come meet her. She's there Thursday afternoons if you'd like to stop in.
Well, you do a great job, Rob. That's for sure. And on top of all of that, you, you always put a great article in the advertiser. Uh, I don't know how you find time for it, frankly. But, but thank you all.
Nothing to do with the, any events happening in February, but, uh, Rob, we'd like to, as a town board, say that you, this is a wonderful report. You do a great job and, um, you know, we, we're, we're very fortunate to have you.
Luke, that's not going to help you from any criticism.
I say has nothing to do with the February event. Nothing to do with this.
Believe me.
Oh, March second.
Nothing will help you.
Second, yeah.
No, we told Luke it was February, so.
All right. Our town historian chooses to remember who said nice words about him on March second. That is his prerogative.
Don't count on it.
Yeah.
Our handsome town historian, I think.
Next is business from the board members and, uh, we'll start with Supervisor Bach.
Um, I, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
That's a tough act to follow, but I did pitch in for Luke the other day on the climate smart community. I put, uh, this, uh, flyer in everybody's mailbox that was provided by Matt Fork. It was a great meeting. Uh, as Luke has reported, uh, previously, we have a very engaged task force who are very eager to, uh, get going and roll up their sleeves. Um, if you look at this, and I don't know if we can share it, uh, how we could share it, but the town of Aurora is actually fifth from the top of all the participating communities in, uh, Western New York or Erie County. Um, so we're doing great. And I think, uh, I don't, once again, I don't want to step on Luke's toes, but we're adding up points and there's the opportunity for, um, getting pretty close to some grant money, maybe. So it's, uh, they're doing good work and, and it's, it's a, I think it's a great system because you earn points and, and why you're earning these points and why you're chasing these grants, lo and behold, you're not putting as much carbon in the atmosphere. So it's, uh, I think it's great. And I think it's great to have so many community members, uh, engaged.
Great.
Uh, open space committee meets tomorrow, so I'll have something to report on there. And the last thing I want to give is a shout out to highway and dog control. I don't know if you saw that article or it's blown up on the internet there that, uh, Luna got adopted. Such a sweetheart and.
It took us three weeks. We took care of Luna. We just had a lot of trouble finding a good home for her and, uh, Homer on the lady fell in love and and Lucy's got a new life.
Lucy now, right? And Kathy who, who it couldn't have said nicer things about Kyle and Liz and the entire department over there. I just, I wonder if there were the time they talked and then Kyle, uh, he, she, she brought Lucy in and then Kyle was like, well, she likes this. She doesn't like that. She likes to go to walk here and just, it, it.
It was during COVID, people were desperate for dogs and, and boy, it's, I don't know what's changed, but we just, we advertised, we just had a heck of a time trying to find a home and it, and it's literally the sweetest dog you've ever met.
Yeah.
We even liked you when it was.
Hey, no. I'm a dog person. No, but she was already posting photos and.
Tried to give it to you.
Yeah, I know. Lucy's passed out on the couch just right at home over there.
Your dog team does a great job. They really do.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Joe. Jim?
Uh, nothing further report except that. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate you attending that meeting and, uh, Luke and everyone, all the hard work you're doing on the clean energy communities. Um, but, um, Joe's very modest and didn't point out that we are kicking the butt out of the village of East Aurora as far as green community. And, uh, outside of the actual county of area itself, that government, we are in third place. So.
Wow.
Overall, so well done. And East Aurora is sitting double digits right now. So they're going to have to step it up a little bit.
Awesome.
Just throwing out. What's this? I'm encouraging them. The way my dad encouraged me.
There you go.
Sure.
There you go.
I'll stop right.
Thank you, Jim. Luke?
Um, yeah, so that, that is the clean energy community. We're doing very well. The clean, uh, climates, the clean, uh, climate smart community. Uh, we have started putting the documents and things together, I think, without even taking, well, I'm absolutely sure that without taking any action, we have bronze status already. So it's a matter of putting those things together, which we're working with Matt. Um, I think again Friday or something, we're, we're going to have the plans, the building. So as soon as we get that document, we'd like to get that in so that in the review in June, we could then, um, receive the bronze status, um, without even having to do anything yet. So, which is, which is nice.
Somebody's doing something.
Yeah. Well, yes, we just spent years of, of doing it and then silver would be the next, uh, the next hurdle, but I think we're, we're very, very well along the way there and thanks to the committee as well. So, um, good initiative and we'll keep working on it. Other than that, I, I don't think there's really much.
Thank you, Luke. And I just want to mention that, um, we did get together with our code committee um, on the, I think it was the the, uh, twelfth to discuss the property over on, uh, Quaker uh, across from the townhouses there. And, and also I had the honor and the privilege of attending the West Falls Fire Company installation with, uh, Superintendent Gunner and his wife and my wife. And we, it was a real nice time and it's always it, it's always great to see how much time and effort and, and the fun that the fire company really has. I mean, they were teasing each other and laughing at each other and, and kind of crazy warts. I mean, one young fella, he got, uh, essentially he got soap because every time he comes to the fire hall, one of the gals says, go wash your hands, go wash your hands. So, so that was his gift and it was just, it was a real nice time. Well, and then there was another one that got a box of tissues. Yes. Yeah. But it was very nice. Next, uh, is, uh, audience too, an opportunity for anyone to address the, uh, town board on any town concern. Would anyone like to step to the mic and give us your name and address? Seeing no one. We'll move on to staff reports and let's start with code enforcement officer Liz Cassidy. Great. Great. Okay. Dave?
Uh, yeah, I met last week on Wednesday with, uh, Region Five Director near D O T about the West Falls Reconstruction Project. Um, it's going to be delayed to twenty twenty-four, but the good news is we were able to get the whole thing, a full depth reconstruction for the whole hamlet. Uh, it's going to have all new sidewalks, the whole hamlet can, with what's there, uh, even brand new ones in front of our library, um, all new drains. Every house will be hooked up into it. Curbs, safety measures. It's a three point five million plus job. So it's going to take a little longer to design, but this is really good news for the Hamlet of West Falls that the state's going to come in there and redo it like they're gonna. So we're excited about that.
Wonderful.
That's it.
Thank you, Dave. Chief? Rob, would you like to add anything else? Okay.
I know you all had alluded to the March second event and I just want to let everybody in on it. Um, if they haven't heard about it, um, the historical society, we're one of the few towns that the historical society actually owns the building. So they have a lot of responsibility for their museums. So this, this is a fundraiser on March second. We're bringing back the annual dinner gala that they have and, uh, I get to dress up as Millard Fillmore and other things and get to, in a fun way, respectful way, make fun of, uh, politicians and what's going on in Washington and Albany. So, um, uh, hopefully everybody's invited if you want to come and hopefully you can become so, um, I have some victims, I mean, participants, um, at the dinner. So, um, but everybody is welcome and it does support our historical society, which does a lot of great work in the community. So.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you, Rob. So it's always a wonderful evening. That's for sure.
Did he say in a respective way?
It's what he said, Jim. We heard it. Same tape.
He, he said, make fun of politicians in Albany and Washington. He did not mention Aurora. So.
Okay.
We alluded to Florida though.
Brad, anything to add? Him? Paul? Okay. Next, can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Oh. Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.